Good evening and welcome to the November first meeting of the Berea Board of Education. Roll call please.
Mrs. Chapman?
Here.
Mrs. Ferris?
Here.
Mr. Docman?
Here.
Mr. Duke?
Here.
Mr. Postal?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Okay, first we have a presentation on our seventh grade camp experience last week. Mr. Blatnicka.
All right, here we go. Well, welcome everybody. I wanted to take some time today and introduce some of our campers that had the awesome opportunity last weekend, October 21st through 24th, to have their Camp Mybrowby experience. These are some of our seventh graders here. We have Austin Maholick is here, and Gabby Bumbry is here, and Alani Relaford are campers that were out at camp. And then we also have some of our high school students, our camp counselors. We have Maya Agnew, 10th grader, Hanalise Perez, 11th grader, Nicole Wang is 11th grader, and Steven Williams is here representing our counselors. We had over 250 7th graders attend camp for our long weekend, and we were split between two sites. So some of these campers were at, we had campers at both sites, and our counselors as well. And we have 32 high school students serve as cabin counselors. So I wanted to invite them today and have, give them an opportunity to share a little bit about what they thought was best, what they, what was a highlight of camp. So we'll give them a little bit of opportunity to share their thoughts. Austin, you want to go first?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
My name's Austin Maholick, and I was in G-Scruse, G-Spruce, the group, and my cabin counselors were Ben and Logan. And a couple of my favorite things was the high rope scores. I really liked the zip line at the end. It wasn't too hard, but climbing up to the ladder was difficult. The food was really good. I liked the people in my cabin, all my friends in my activity group, and the counselors were really nice. And another thing that I really enjoyed was the giant swing. You could hold yourself up, and whenever you were ready, you could let yourself drop and just swing. And my favorite thing was probably canoeing, because I got to go with my friends in the same canoe, and we all got to, it was just really fun.
My name's Gabrielle Bumbry, and I was in Cottonwood, and my counselors were Leah and Reagan. And my favorite thing was probably the rope course or the big swing, because I like the zip line, and I like just being like swung in the air. And I didn't get a chance to go to canoeing, because when I was supposed to go canoeing, it started raining. And so I never got a chance to do that, and, but overall, all the other activities were really fun.
Hi, my name is Alani Relaford, and I was in Group Papa, and my counselors were DJ and Chance Arica. I loved everything. I just think everything was great, because it's a chance to show off your survival skills and to show that you have a lot of things that you can do while you're living. And it's more than just doing fun stuff, but it's also learning about how our natural habitats are made and how life was created. And I liked when we were throwing the axes, like right there, that's Emma Rivera, my best friend. And we had a lot of fun, because I, I just liked it, because it's just showing me that I can just take more fun risks and learn more things as I go.
Hi, I'm Maya Agnew, and I'm a sophomore. I was a counselor for Buckeye, and I loved everything about camp. I loved it from the six mile hike that we had to do, to simply just like going to the bathroom with them. Everything was so much fun. My favorite part was actually canoeing. We actually had a hole in our boat, so we started sinking in the middle of the lake. So we had to jump into one bow, and there was like four people in one bow. And my other favorite part was the free time that we got, and I just got to play football and basketball with the kids, and it was so much fun. And I will definitely be doing the sixth grade camp in the spring.
Hi, my name's Hanalise Perez. I'm a junior, and my group was Sweet Gum. I honestly like love those kids. I got to bond, like over the four days, I got to bond with them so much. We had so much fun. And it was also like a very fun opportunity to bond with like other students who were counselors that we didn't even know each other. It's such a new way to like make new friends. Like right now, we still talk to each other, even though we haven't been with each other for a whole week. It's such a good experience to bond with other people, and those kids, you learn about those kids are so sweet. And they like share of like genuine bond with you over those couple of days that you stay with them. And I'm definitely doing sixth grade camp. It's such a great time, and I don't regret it. So, yeah.
Hi, my name's Nicole Wang. I'm a junior, and I was a counselor for Elm. My favorite part about camp was bonding with the kids especially, and at the end of the, like the last day, my girls and I exchanged Snapchats, and I still keep in touch with them, and it was like, we still talk about camp every single day, and it makes me miss it so much. So I can't wait to do this in the spring with the sixth graders.
Hello, my name is Steven. I'm a junior, and I was a counselor for Oak. My kids were, they were pretty cool. I got to meet them and get to know them pretty well. Yeah, just like, all the activities there were super fun. My favorite part was actually the hiking. I know a lot of people didn't like, like it, because it went for a long period of time, but I love nature, and I actually connected more to nature with the super long hikes. So I'm probably going to use the sixth grade camp event.
Thank you guys, thank you.
Thanks everyone.
Students, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but don't feel like you have to. Thank you for coming and sharing your experience.
Thank you guys, thank you.
Okay, next we have a presentation on the state report card from Mr. Moreno.
I was just joking, whenever any tech goes wrong, just yell Vicki's name, and it gets fixed. It's like magic. All right. Good evening. So I was asked to answer a few follow-up questions regarding some state testing information. So, so this is a topic that one would think is very simple. You give a test, you get a score, boom, it's done. Yet it is quite complex. So in putting together some of this information that you are about to hear, with a lot of help from, from a lot of, from my colleagues, Mike Pello, you know, being one of them, he's one of our academic coordinators. It was funny when we were, we were at a call, what's not readily available, we had to call ODE for some, for some answers, and about some historical information, and they said, quote, "We can't answer these questions, because nobody was here that long ago." So what you're about to hear is really not commonplace among, amongst educators in school systems. So if you see any errors, there weren't a lot of eyes on this information prior to this, so just let me know. Some of the, some of the information might be a little bit off, but this is, is accurate as where we are today. So question one was, how has the test changed over the past 10 years? So state tests are not your, and please just stop me if I'm, I'm going, I'm rambling, or if you have questions, just, just, just feel free to stop me. But just, I thought it was, it was worth noting that state tests are not like your typical tests you take in the classroom. They're not, they're, they are not criteria reference tests. Criteria reference tests are the ones you typically have in the classroom. They test a, assess a person's knowledge against a predetermined set of standards or performance levels. For example, a driver's test, that is a criteria reference test. You have a certain knowledge you need to have in order to get your license. The state tests are not criteria reference, they are norm reference tests. Norm reference tests are tests that you compare your score with the norm of other groups. There's a bell curve. There will always be a bottom half and a top half in a norm reference test. Achievement, achievement gaps will never close, because bell curves never close. That is their design. So good thing, a driver's test is not a norm reference test. If it were, then 35% of adults would never get their driver's license. So state tests get tricky and confusing because of the data that we get back. It appears that it is a certain set of criteria, yet the questions are normed to compare students' progress to others in their peer group. So for example, many tests have upwards of 50 questions, but only, but the state only grades 35 of them, because they won't grade questions that 95 to 99% of the kids get correct. So they norm the questions of which ones they grade and report back to school districts. So that was a preamble to the data that you see up here. What has changed over the past 10 years? There's been a lot of changes. So up on the screen, and some of this has been updated since the, with the forms that you guys have in front of you. But I just made a point to highlight a few of the items in the bottom, and if you see any other questions, trends, things that you seem a little bit off, feel free to ask. But what I thought were some of the big noteworthy changes over the past 10 years were, one, the first thing that stood out was just the number of vendor changes. Even before OAA was proficiency, but then you had OAA, which then went to Park, which then went to Ohio State Tests, but that was just a cover, because really, in Ohio State Tests, they still use different vendors. It went from Air, and now Cambian bought Air, so it's, it's now Cambian. But we call it Ohio State Test. So there's been one, two, three, four, five, six different vendors, five different vendors in the, in the previous, in about 10 years' time. So with each vendor change, there's a different blueprint that changes. Blueprint, an example of a blueprint would be here on the screen. These are all readily available on the website, so he's in English Language Arts. I'll just pull grade three. So this is what a blueprint would look like, where you have ELAs broken up into three categories. This gives some details of what that test entails, not specific, certainly, certainly general, but you have the total number of points, how much each point's in each category. And I think most importantly is this bottom part, in terms of a significant change. They call this the depth of knowledge. So every question has a certain depth of knowledge, one through four. And this is how many, how many questions, how many points total, based on each depth of knowledge. So they're asking not just recall questions, which would be a level one. There's only between zero, oftentimes no level one questions or points. It's more in-depth, which would be level two and level three. And to get specific on what a depth of knowledge looks like, here's, there's another link there for you guys to, to look on, but this is, many different resources out there, but essentially, this in a nutshell, is what a depth of knowledge levels are. Level one is memorization, recall, recite. This is what maybe a lot of us are used to, maybe when we went to school, but the tests are assessing skills, concepts, strategic thinking, and rarely, but sometimes happens, it goes to a level four. Not in state tests, but they do in, in classrooms. So most of the state tests are in level two, level three, where you're not re-memorizing anything. You take information and classify it, or graph it, or do a cause and effect, compare, predict, modify, those kinds of things.
Adam, who assigns the number of points to each depth of knowledge? The vendor, or the Department of Education, teachers?
I believe the vendor presents the assessment to the state, and the state then, then moves around, but it's not a, yeah, that is a, that is a, that is a typical, right now, it's changed over the years, but that's what it is until someone from the state tells us differently. All our communication comes from the state, not from the vendor. A couple other points is the increased lengths of tests. If you look back in the early years, each test was about two and a half hours, or about 150 minutes. And now the tests are, some of them are still 150 minutes. The English Language Arts are 180 minutes total, and they're broken up, before it was one day, now they take that time and divide it over two days. So it is probably a little bit better, more efficient for students, and more accurate for students. But the lengths of the tests have increased or stayed the same. They have, you may note that they removed the social studies tests, there's no social studies state tests in all, in grades three through eight. That doesn't start till high school, with government and history. They decreased writing in subjects other than English Language Arts. So prior to, and then this link here, this will show you how vastly different, this was the OAA blueprint back in the 2010s, 11s, 12s. Doesn't really tell you much. They just tell you how many multiple choice answers there were, how many short answer two-point, how many extended responses, number of points. So you can see this graphic from the previous one, that they've changed a lot. But you'll note in here that every subject had an extended response writing question, and that is no longer the case. It's just in, they're just assessing writing in English Language Arts, which is where it should belong, not in math, and in science, and in social studies, where they should be assessing science skills and social studies skills. Another big change was the, you won't see this in this chart, but there's what we call dynamic questions. So previously, there was just multiple choice. You fill in a bubble, A, B, C, D. Now the questions have a variety of different ways to, students need to answer. They need to drag and drop, they need to highlight things. There's a, just, it's, we call it dynamic questions and answers, not just filling in the blank. So if you want to see all the different types of dynamic questions, it depends on the grade level, depends on the test, there's different dynamic questions, but those are just a few examples, like you, and you have to manipulate, for math, for example, you need to click in a certain box in the equation, and then up comes all these different options of numbers and mathematical signs, and so there's a little bit of a learning curve there that we go over with kids about how to answer these questions, because you want to obviously reflect what they know, and you don't want a test to, to hinder their knowledge. So it does hinder their knowledge, so we need to spend some time to, to go over some of those dynamic question types that are pretty hard to replicate in a, in a classroom sometimes. And of course, another big change was moving from paper to online testing, which I put in parentheses there, that is more challenging for the younger students, to try and express what they know, their thoughts, when they're trying to, to type. And if you've ever seen a third grader type versus write, you will see there's a dramatic difference in what they can write, much improved, than what they can type, where they can never find C or B on the keyboard. It is a tough, those are tough letters, they expect it to be in the middle row, it's not, it's at the bottom. It takes a long time for kids to, to type out their, their full thought. So those are the big items, I thought, but if you saw anything else there in that chart that you see is a big difference in the last 10 years, feel free to ask, ask about it. Question number two, hmm, where'd question two go? Ah, there it is. Question two that was, I was asked about was about, what is our comparison of level, comparison of income level of the top five districts in the state? And so, just gonna fill this. So how, oh no, where'd it go? Ah, whoo, just scrolled. The top five districts in the state, well, one, first let me say, it's hard to say which school district is the top performing, because there are so many areas of performance. Is the highest performance index score, is it graduation rate, is it the biggest improvement, is it high gap closing, is it early literacy scores? So to say which is the top is challenging. So I just use performance index score, which is that each student is given a rating on each test, the lowest rating being limited, then basic, then proficient, then accelerated, then advanced. Well, then there's advanced plus, which is when they score advanced, but they are grade level accelerated. So if they're a fifth grader taking a sixth grade test, and then they score advanced, then they're considered advanced plus. So each of those ratings get a number. Proficient is one, basic is .6, limited is .3. I might be off by those numbers, but you get the gist, and then basically, all the students with their scores get a product, and that is how they get a performance index score. So I used that value to compare these school districts, and this, that is not available, you know, up until, you know, years ago. So this was, I believe, 1819, or 17, 18, 1819, 1819 school, uh, schools, districts in the top five. And then you see, so you have the top five in the, in that time period, Solon Rocky River, Sugarin Falls, and Madera, Ottawa Hills. And then you have their average household income, and then you have the three cities that make up Berea there with the average. So got this from the consensus bureau, which someone pointed out some wrong numbers, so I updated them, but, so if numbers are wrong, then I apologize, I can update this. But here is the comparison. I feel like when you do something like this, one would ask the question is, why is it this way? There's a lot of research out there that correlates income to performance, but there's not a lot of research on why the income in, and, uh, performance is so closely correlated. However, I've found some interesting research over the years, and, and most recently, you know, when asked to answer some of these questions, that I thought would be worth mentioning, perhaps a conversation for another day. But poverty doesn't mean that poor students are not smart. This is what the research that I have dug up. So what it means is that there are typically other factors involved. It is based on stressors in the household. So low-income households typically have a higher population of students with stressors than in the home than a, than a high-income household. These items range to any stressors, such as mental health issues, or drug abuse, or violence, or hunger, or what, anything that would be considered a stressor. Now, it does not say that stressors don't exist in high-income households, but they are more prevalent in the low-income, poverty-stricken households. So when you have these types of trauma and stressors, it releases a chemical called, in the brain called cortisol. Cortisol is like a poison to learning. Humans cannot learn, students or adults, when you have an increase of cortisol, you are in survival mode. This is the fight or flight response. This fact, and really this fact alone, is why so many schools focus on relationships. There's so much more to school than academics. So we can make students comfortable and relaxed by establishing solid relationships, students learn better. This is not Adam saying that, that is neuroscience saying that. I will continue. Question three. How much time, there's only four questions, in case you're counting. Question three, how many time is spent taking and preparing for state tests? So back in the day, the OAA test, which was the first vendor that was listed there, there was, there was significant time for test prep around the state because there was not a lot of alignment to the state standards to the actual test. So with the current testing vendors, there was a great effort to align those state standards with the state tests. So in reality, since the test is aligned to what the state wants us to learn and with the standards, all kids and teachers should be spending, all the time that kids and teachers are spending now is to improve student achievement, which you could say is, is time spent on the test. But to answer the literal test prep questions, it varies. I have some rough estimates about, you know, there's time ensuring that students know how to log into the testing site. Younger students need a class period or two to go over all the different dynamic questions that we talked about. There's practice tests that, that students can do that. So that takes a class period or two. Teachers get training on how to administer the test every year, which is approximately 45, 60 minutes. There's certainly some, a lot of time preparing for the data and reviewing it with teachers. It's another few hours for teachers to review and analyze. Few days for people in my office to give these wonderful speeches and to try to give the data to people in a, in a easily actionable way. So I don't know if I can really quantify how much time is spent, but there's definitely time spent just on the state test itself. I'm pausing for questions. My last question that I was, I was asked to answer is, what changes has the district put in place over the last few years in order to improve achievement? So I would say many things. So what I'm about to list here is not an exhaustive list. But the first thing I would say would be that there is a shift from district leaders focused on operations. You know, this is, there's been a lot of consolidating buildings, transitions to the right number of buildings. There's been a lot of that, it needed to be done. So now the shift with really a whole new leadership team, new in the last three, four years. The shift is now, now that the buildings have settled and we are where we are, to focus on teaching, learning, building the capacity of instructional leadership in the building. Another thing that popped up with my team of, of thinkers is we have a very clear and concise instructional plan with very clear instructional goals. Third thing was the last strategic plan, which I believe lasted from 2016 to 2021, had approximately 100 action steps. And guess how many action steps were focused on technology? Think of a number in your head. If your answer was four, you would be correct. Four out of 100 was focused on technology. And of that four, a lot of it was just software and really wasn't instructional technology anyway. So with Dr. Turner, Scott and Chris back there, in the tech team we have, we've really ramped up the instructional technology skills for both our students and teachers, which at times, to be honest, is not easy lifting. Fourth thing I thought of was we put curriculum updates on a six-year cycle. We started, as you may already know, with math. Update and align our curriculum with the state standards. Newer textbook has mathematical reasoning skills, which is reflective of the depth of questions that the state asks, wants us to answer. So the old textbook was 2015 standards and the math revision was the 2017 standards. And they were certainly not asking a lot of, of DOK, depth of knowledge, two or three questions in those books. So now I believe that the state, our curriculum reflects those level of questions. And we've had many conversations with teachers about that. And to be frank, we have, we have great teachers. They were just teaching the wrong level of questions that they should have been asking, but we have great teachers. But this is still a problem. We're going to work on fixing it, which leads to number, I don't know what number I'm on, five or six. Creating and utilizing common assessments that reflect the level of questions students should be answering. If you see test questions that require a lot of memorization skills on your kids' tests, it is likely not a question that is aligned to the state standards. And that should be questioned. And we're, we quite, we question it, principals question it. So I guess this would be some advice for anybody listening. If you see a question that requires a lot of memorization, ask this question. This is a real example. Who was the author of, who was the author's famous wife? That's a memorization question. So what you should say in the email or conversation is, write the question, who was the author's famous wife? What state standard is that question aligned to? And I doubt they'll be able to answer it because it's not aligned. And it's a waste of the teacher's time and it's a waste of the, of the student's time because that's not the level of questions we want them to answer. If you can Google the answer, it's not a high quality question. And lastly, I believe, and my team believes, if we have more than three priorities, you have no priorities. And we have three priorities, as I mentioned. As I've mentioned before up here, we are streamlining our resources and goals. Two, we are going to focus on strengthening our teams to problem solve and learn because in education, there's always problems to solve and there's always something new to learn. And three, we're going to focus on effective teaching strategies to help our students try to achieve at their highest potential. Those are the questions I was prepared for to answer. So anything else, anybody has? Tracy would be happy to answer them. Right.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Third and final presentation by our treasurer, five-year forecast.
Okay. Tonight I'm going to present the November five-year forecast. I must say this forecast in my 15-year career was, was one of the toughest probably to do. A lot of changes occurring between COVID, between the new state funding formula. We're going to try a new update this year, so I will, you know, get into all those details and explain as we go along what all these changes mean. The five-year forecast is a tool that we use. It's basically a tool that we use to sign our contracts, our 412 certificates. It's also a tool the Department of Education utilizes and the State Auditor's Office utilizes to see the, to see if districts are headed towards financial difficulties. We'll start off with the forecast. I've handed out tonight to you guys, the forecast and the assumptions. They're linked in the agenda. They will be posted on the webpage after the board approves it to submit at the next meeting. We're just going to run down through the forecast. I'm going to hit a few key line items that I wanted to go over tonight. Basically, our revenue for fiscal '22, our property taxes. Sorry Vic, if you could go to the next slide. Our property taxes make up 80% of our revenue. The state of Ohio payments make up 11% and all other revenue, which is basically interest, student fees, make up about 9%. Um, as you can see, we ended the year last year, our actual revenue is around 85 million. Moving forward in the forecast, it goes for 84 million, down to 82 million, down to 81 million, and then back up a little bit. The reason the forecast mainly goes down is because we're losing some money from the state of Ohio. That'll be gone in 2023. It was inventory tax, tangible personal property tax we were receiving as reimbursement from the state of Ohio. And that money, that reimbursement is, is finally gone after 2023. We get right now currently about $2 million in that. At one time, we got about $10 million in that inventory tax. The state of Ohio did away with the inventory tax back in about 2005 or 2006. It's been gone for a while. They were supposed to hold us harmless and reimburse us for it. But as you can see, as the years have gone on, they have cut that tax. As the forecast goes up in revenue in later years, it's all due to the assumptions of the new state funding formula and the phase in of that new formula. This forecast does assume that formula is going to come after this biennial budget that it's going to continue and they're going to continue phasing it in. The profession, superintendents of treasurers worked very hard on the new funding model. So I hope the legislature, now that we finally have a fair funding model, I hope they keep it and I hope they keep funding it to the levels that it, that as the phase in moves on. Again, our biggest revenue is real estate taxes. Real estate taxes. This year, like I said, in, this is in '21, we're in a triennial update. Every three years, the, the county auditor does like a computer update to, to the home values and to the, the commercial values. Every six years, they actually do a reappraisal. So starting with our payments next year in calendar '22, we will see an increase. Basically, they're, they're looking at sales values, they're looking at computer generated things to make sure where the values should be. If you see on this, we are the fourth one down on here. Our current valuation is about 1.4 billion. About 1.4 billion. Our updated values, we're supposed to see a 14% increase in the, the total assessed values of all the property up to almost 1.6 billion. That's again, a 14% increase. We'll go to the next slide, Vic. That does not necessarily mean your taxes are going to go up though. House Bill 920 was put into effect in the late 70s when there was high inflation. Basically, what House Bill 920 says is school districts cannot see increases on the inflationary increases. So as the valuation goes up, they roll back what we're getting. We only get what we got the first year it was passed. So if a levy was passed in 1980 for $400,000, today I get $400,000 off that levy. Even though our valuations are going up, we, they roll those levies back. The only thing we see increases on is what's called inside millage. Inside millage is we, we have 4.05 of inside mills. That's given to every school district when the school districts were formed. We see increases on that four mills. And we see increases on new construction. If new construction comes on, because that comes on, that's, that's an increase. You know, it's a new home, it's a new business. So just because we see, you know, we're going to see an increase in our valuation, does not necessarily mean we're going to see a ton of money. The county auditor, if you go back to the last slide, Vic, the county auditor is saying we're going to see an increase of $818,000. So that's a, that's a nice increase. We'll see as this, this plays out and they do the collections versus delinquencies, how, how that, that all plays out this next year. Um, next slide. This is our state money. As you can see, we ended the year last year at, at almost 10.5 million in, in the regulars money. There was, there's also restricted money. You can see those numbers have dramatically changed in the forecast. They've gone down in, in the regular money and the restricted money has gone up. This is a result of the new state funding formula, the fair school funding plan. So what's changed? Basically, what the state did, superintendents and treasurers got together and created, created a new state model. The new state model is, is based off of a base cost formula and it's based off of just enrollment. The prior formula, we were paid for every student that was ours, regardless of where they went. And then if they went to a charter school or they went to open enrollment, they did a deduct off of us and they sent that money to the charter school. This formula is truly based off of enrollment, kids in seats. How many kids do we have? Not, and then the charter schools are being funded separately, open enrollment's being funded separately. So basically, our ADM versus our enrollment is less. So that's why the state money went down a little bit. Our restricted money is going up because they've added some other things into the restricted categories, such as the wellness funding we were receiving. That was put in the, uh, two budget, or one budget ago, it was put in wellness funding. It was in a separate fund. They've now rolled that into the, to the general fund. So our, you know, our wellness money is, is causing some of that increase. They're funding some other, other categories a little higher, such as catastrophic costs. Catastrophic costs are, any student that's ours, it's very expensive. Over a certain threshold, we are allowed to petition the state and try to get some reimbursement for that. We don't get full dollar for dollar, but we get, I think last year they paid out about 30% of, of everybody. They put a pot of money in there, everybody petitions for it and then they divvy it out. They have now increased that to almost 60% that we should be receiving for those, those expensive kids. And to qualify, they have to be over, I think about 30 grand from the get-go. Their costs themselves for us to even petition the state for that extra money. So as you can see, the revenue, the revenue's gone down, but that's all in just again, ADM versus enrollment. If we go to the expenditure side, you can see. What's happening with the expenses? Open enrollment is no longer an expense of ours. Community schools are no longer an expense. Autism scholarship, no longer an expense. These were all sitting in purchase services, the purchase service expense line item. These are being removed now. These are being direct funded by the state to the entities themselves. So the net impact on expenditures at the bottom was about $2.5 million, $2.6 million. And then if you go to the next slide, Vic, it's just a comparison. Combined revenue versus expenditures, we're, we're going to end up on the, the positive side of this new funding model. About $1 million. So that's, that's good news. The software that I use to do this, they've created the software, how to work through all this stuff. The state has not released any of this, this stuff yet. Normally, the state, in a biennial budget year, a new budget, they usually release it in October. We usually get the new funding in October. We get, you know, here's, here's what it looks like. They are coming out in December with it. They needed some time to, to fix their systems, to fix all the payment systems and work through all this. But our, our software, our company was able to get all this made. Very good experts from the profession themselves who have left the profession to go do this. So it was a big help to, to do this forecast. Next slide. If we go to the expense side, we've talked about the expense side at length. Payroll and benefits are our biggest expenses in the forecast. Payroll run is about 53% and benefits run about 27%. The benefit line item would be our health insurance, our retirement. We have to pay workers' compensation and we have to pay board share of Medicare. We have a, a share of Medicare we have to pay. So that's the, the benefit side. When you, you look at the forecast. We start at 84 million. Last year, that was our actual expenses, down to 81 million this year. A lot of that is the change in the, you know, the community school and the open enrollment deducts not being in there anymore as expenses. And then the forecast runs out from there. If you go to the next slide, Vic. Payroll benefits again are our biggest line item. What's happening with payroll and benefits in, I think the next slide is, you can see it goes up. We received a lot of stimulus money, a lot, everybody has received stimulus money. The forecast in '21, we had, we approximately 40 employees came out of the forecast due to right sizing the ship with enrollment and making sure we were being fiscally responsible. When the stimulus money came, this has been a wild roller coaster. Remember back in May of 2020 when we were cut 1.2 million dollars? And then we were cut 1.2 million for the next year. Then we got some of that back. Then all this stimulus money came. So it's been a wild roller coaster the last 18 months with the funding. The stimulus money, the majority of the stimulus money that we received went to COVID supplies, went to COVID cleaning supplies, went to HVAC improvements, instructional supplies, the Atlas Plan that was presented this summer. There was a lot of instructional supplies that were in that Atlas Plan that the, the stimulus money is funding. And then just materials for students. There's currently 15 employees that are being funded out of that stimulus money, so that helps the forecast. That's also why it jumps back up in 2025, because those employees are coming back in. That's when the stimulus money has to be spent. Not all 15 stay in the for, or stay in that, that other fund that whole time. It's as the money allowed. We tried to leave them in there and stretch them out as we could. But again, the stimulus money has to be spent by 2024. Line 6.010, this is the most, like I always say, the most important line on the forecast. This shows what's happening every year, revenues minus expenditures. Does not include our cash balance, does not include, you know, we're, the, the money we have, you know, as our little savings account. As you can see, we're, in '21, we, we ended the year positive. '22 and '23, we're projected to end positive, but we start deficit spending again in '24 and '25 as the, as those payrolls come back in. We're, you know, we're well aware of it. We're going to continue to monitor, you know, our biggest expenses versus our enrollment and then continue to, to watch these deficit spending lines. We want to get out as far as we can without deficit spending. As you know, revenues are flatlined, expenses go up. So the more we can work on these now, the better it'll be. Our cash balance line, line 12, this is a line used to certify contracts. This is. This is a line to, basically, to sign any long-term agreements. These have to be positive in the future years in order for me to actually certify anything. Our cash balances are doing fairly well at this point in time. As you can see, I'm estimating out in 2026, we'll have around a $10 million cash balance. That is, it meets our cash balance policy. That's enough to fund one month of expenditures. One month of expenditures is around 8.5 million, $9 million of expenditures for one month of operations. That is a goal, a cash balance policy that we have. But over the years and with the stimulus money that we just had, this helps keep the cash balance. But you can see it starts going down as we start deficit spending. That is all I had tonight. I just wanted to do a brief synopsis. This will be, again, on the website after the board approves it at the next meeting. It's linked in the agenda. Are there any questions that I can answer at this time? Mr. Dokman? Down one bit. The other way. There you go.
So let's say there's a... Let's just say there's a huge government change. So January 1st, 2023, government serves. That's it. Flow cut off. But if I'm still this time, you have to be allowing there's something...
My answer to that would be, that would be a crystal ball on that. The majority of the stimulus money is being spent now. So if there was a change in government, the only thing that it would affect would be the payroll that's sitting in there right now. And as I said, not all 15 employees are in there the whole time. So we phased them out as we got the different phases of the stimulus money in. We've gotten three different rounds. And so the only thing I would worry about, because the majority of the stimulus money is being spent now on students, on HVAC, on COVID-related supplies. So I would say that that would be my only worry at that point in time of, how many payrolls do I have in there? What do I need to make up in the general fund? And, you know, it would, by that time, we're deficit spending, but our cash balances are okay. So we would have to look at that at that point in time. They would flow back into the general fund. And again, I would have to look up to see in the later years of the forecast, how many are actually in there. I know this year there's 15, I think next year there's only eight. The following year, I believe there's only eight.
Thanks, Jill. Thanks to your staff, too, for putting that together for us. Next is public participation. Our first speaker is James Gresh.
Curious on that fiscal report, how much is spent on social emotional learning and who these employees are. Be curious to know those things. Got a response from Tracy over the weekend, thank you, regards to my email. You felt it was inappropriate for the article I sent you? And I disagree with you on that, because these things are going on all over the country. In my second email, I asked you to pay attention to what's going on in school boards and schools all across the country where this stuff is being discovered. It's not right-wing conspiracy theories. This stuff is going on, what is being discovered, all over the country. Loudoun County, girl raped by a guy in a dress, and the administration covered it up. Loudoun County also, mother's six-year-old daughter was told during a history lesson that she was born evil because she's white. Kansas City, Oleth High School. Kids were given a gender unicorn worksheet that asked about their gender identities and which sex they were attracted to, or if they were in gender confusion. When caught, they asked the kids not to fill it out, when caught. Hudson, porn in schools. Rocky River, drag queens at the library. And if you've seen the reporting lately, the teachers, the teacher that they accused of taking photos, he's totally innocent. They did nothing wrong. But the school administration didn't want to talk to him, they just fired him. Or they had to resign, or I'm not sure exactly which. These were 17-year schoolteachers, great teachers. You showed in your report, Rocky River, one of the best schools in the state. Now they're not going to be, because they just got forced five or six great teachers out for nothing, for lies. And that's what's going on. That's what this liberal, the Democrats, are doing in our schools. And it's out there for you to see. But apparently, you know, our media doesn't report it. You people don't look at other media. It's all I can figure out. Is there any local media here tonight? Do you cover school board meetings? How about the Brexville one a couple days ago on October 27th? Did you hear the parents in that one? So please, I'm asking you, consider some other news sources. I suggested, Tracy, watch some Fox News. Probably all got cable here. I know you probably don't like it. Let's go, Brandon.
Dave Cecarelli.
It's a bummer all those parents and kids left, because they really need to stay here and pay attention to more of these meetings, because that's kind of why we're in this predicament that we are right now with Jedi, at least in my opinion. I'm going to read something from the jediinstitute.com. "The Jedi Institute of Justice, Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion exists to facilitate education that demystifies, applicates, and mitigates the systemic consequences of the strongholds of patriarchy and white supremacy on the physical, vocational, financial, and emotional well-being of marginalized people." "Their vision is predicated upon three pillars: demystification, application, and correction. In demystification, we engage hard work, both individually and communally, to dismantle ignorance regarding the practical implications of patriarchy and white supremacy on minoritized lives. In explication, they analyze the origins and development of these oppressive systems and their impact on the lived realities of marginalized people. In correction, they take what we learn, what they learn, and mobilize to counteract injustice." I want to go back to patriarchy, which is a system of society or government in which men hold the power and women are largely excluded from it. I see four women appear at the table right now. One of the women is the president, and she's been on this board for about seven years, I believe. And at least four that I know of as president. And the superintendent, who is also a woman, decided to single-handedly take away the fist lightning bolt logo because a couple people were offended by it. This is from what I understand, I don't know if that's true or not. Like to talk to you about that. And also, what it says in this, in the justiceinstitute.com, "There are many ongoing conversations that evoke equity, diversity, and inclusion, but justice is often a lesser developed concept." Why is that? Because justice requires that we do our own work. I mean, that, I don't know what work that you think that justice has to do with this. I mean, I saw all those kids having a real good time, all getting along, and I don't understand why we need to implement something. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. If it smells like shrimp, looks like shrimp, it's probably shrimp.
Larry Gabbert.
Hi, thank you. My name's Larry Gabbert, and I wanted to talk about a couple of things. The first thing is, when I was doing a little bit of looking around on the first topic that I was going to speak on, I found this, this is related to Board of Education Policy 2416. It says, "The Board of Education respects the privacy rights of parents and their children. No student shall be required as part of a school program or the district's curriculum without prior written consent to the student, if an adult or an emancipated minor, or if an unemancipated minor, his or her parents, to submit or participate in a survey, analysis, or evaluation that reveals information concerning..." Some of these things are, you know, there's a list A through H, and one of them is sex behaviors or attitudes, a number of others. Says, "Further, parents have the right to inspect upon request a survey or evaluation created by a third party before the survey evaluation is administered or distributed by the school to the student. The parent will have access to the survey evaluation within reasonable period of time after the request is received by the building principal." So wanted to point that out. I thought that was interesting. In there, one of the things that it mentions is written consent. And I don't know if there's something else within the board policy which negates that written consent and allows for an email to be sent with the option to opt out of something. I don't know if that replaces, if there's something that replaces that. But according to what I'm reading there, that to me is, seems pretty specific. And therefore, it seems like there's probably a large percentage of parents that did not give written consent to the survey that was conducted as a part of the equity audit. If that's the case, then I would like to see that the results of the equity audit are destroyed, both all digital as well as physical data related to that. The next topic, 38 seconds here. Wanted to point out that as a parent, I was extremely disturbed when seventh grader, one of our middle schoolers, received on Monday, the 25th, I believe it was, an invitation to an after-school club for the Gender and Sexuality Alliance, I believe, was the name of it. I was actually doing research on there, there's where I found that policy. This was listed as GSA in the activities section in the school. Doesn't even spell it out for parents to see ahead of time. This was sent specifically to our child, our middle schooler, not to us as a parent. However, we did receive the Yearbook Club invitation, but not Gender and Sexuality Alliance. Anyone who thinks that's okay?
Hey, superintendent's update.
All right, I have two things. Just one, the information went out on Friday, obviously, about the change in the, well, the new health quarantine alternative. You guys got that email, but I wanted to know if there were any specific questions about that. I met with all the admins on Friday afternoon. We actually have a case, a positive case already, that we will start to implement the mask-to-stay policy for anyone who is interested in that. I just want to make it clear that if a family doesn't choose to participate in the mask-to-stay or to the test-to-play, everything reverts back to the original quarantine protocols that were put in place by the Health Department at the beginning of the year. So if there are no questions on that, then the only other thing is...
I do. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Who's monitoring if the child is actually wearing their mask?
The staff has to. So the, all the building, part of my conversation with the building administrators was, obviously, in elementary, it's much easier to monitor, to notify if they're going to a special or in their classroom. Middle school and high school, they are coming up with their own plan. I think they're doing kind of sheets by grade level, whatever it is, to make sure that they're notified. Notifying staff, so that, it's really, the staff has to be responsible every day. Look at that list to see. The good thing is, knock on news, knock on wood, good news is that our numbers have dropped drastically. The last two weeks, we had not had, prior to the new quarantine policy coming out, we had not had to exclude any student due to being a close contact. So of course, we have one today. So we'll see how that goes with implementing the new policy. Okay, the other thing is, and I want to apologize, because I should have done this at the last meeting, and Vicky's probably going to kill me right now, is that I do want to let the board know, and I don't know if you'd seen it or not on social media, but Ms. Turner was able to successfully defend her dissertation about a month ago. And so now, we are very happy to refer to her as Dr. Turner. So I just wanted to recognize that, because I know a lot of blood, sweat, and tears went into that. Do you want to tell them a little bit about what your dissertation was? Okay.
No, you need to come to the mic.
No, get up there on the microphone. You can't be the person who sits back there all the time.
Really, the person who gives us the rules.
Right.
I thought you were going to tell me you had to send me a presentation I had to pull up.
Nope. Look, I should start to pay attention all of a sudden.
It was six years working on my dissertation and the coursework that went with it. It was actually on K-12 educator and administrator perception of student learning in makerspaces. So, and the final product, my statistics involved five other school districts and 15 people. It was a qualitative research, so interviewing them, which came up to about 39 pages of all of their comments and then going through the process. So it's up waiting on ProQuest. It should be available soon, and then December 17th, I'm going to go to the ceremony in Chicago.
Good for you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
So I ended on good news. That's all I have.
Okay. Before we move on to our last item, Dr. Postal has something he'd like to say.
So I wanted to present a banner to the school district. It was presented to me by Polaris Career Center and Project Lead the Way for being a distinguished school. And their definition of a distinguished school is one that celebrates districts and schools committed to helping students own their education by increasing student access, engagement, and achievement in their Project Lead the Way programs. Currently, at our high school, we have 198 students involved in engineering and biomedical sciences. This is our first year offering programs at the middle school, which are medical detectives and automation and robotics. So I just want to present this to the school.
It's fairly large, but I thought anytime we can applaud academics...
Thanks, Neil. "It's recommended the Board of Education enter into executive session for the purpose of consideration of the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of an employee or official." So moved?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Dokman?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Thank you, everyone, for coming.